Good evening. The regular monthly board meeting of the Ambridge Area School District Board of Directors on Wednesday, October 20th, 2021 is now called to order. Please rise for the flag. This meeting is being recorded for district purposes. It is or may be published in part or in its entirety on the district's website without the express permission of meeting participants. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Angus? Ms. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Keigho?
Here.
Dr. Maganello?
Same here Denise.
Denise?
She's waving.
She's waving?
Yeah, she's waving. Something's going on. She said something wrong.
We can also call by phone if that's the case.
Well, at least you can't. We can't hear her.
Working on it.
All right. Can you hear now? Well, we can't hear you.
Can you just answer for roll call, please, Mrs. Maganello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. June?
Mr. Metz?
Here.
Ms. Pedego?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Eight present.
Can I have the sunshine law, please?
The Board of School Directors held an executive session on Wednesday, October 13th and October 20th to discuss personnel matters, matters subject to attorney-client privilege, and other confidentiality laws.
Thank you. Do we have any correspondence this evening?
No correspondence.
Thank you. I have a motion on the floor to accept or correct the minutes of Wednesday, September 8th Meet and Discuss voting meeting, Wednesday, September 8th Meet and Discuss non-voting meeting, and Wednesday, September 15th Board meeting. Have I so moved?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Curtis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I have a motion to accept the Treasurers' report dated August and September 2021.
Salute.
Thank you, Mrs. Keigho. Thank you, Ms. Young. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do not have any amendments to the agenda this evening? Moving forward to recognition and presentation. I'm going to actually move down to the microphone down here so I can present to the boys, but can I have Adam and Will come forward, please?
Start with, can everybody hear me?
Start with Adam this evening. Adam Fernandez, football team, ninth grader. Ambridge Bridgers freshman, wide receiver, kick returner, punt returner, Adam Fernandez, scored on a 60-yard punt return for a touchdown, 80-yard kick return for a touchdown, and added one catch for 50 yards. In total, Adam had 210 all-purpose yards en route to a 35-9 victory over the Hopewell Vikings. Adam's play helped the Bridgers break a 28-game losing streak. Adam's accomplishments earned him a nomination for PA Player of the Week. Adam finished second with 24% of the votes, 17,00961 total votes. On behalf of the school board, I've known Adam since he was a little boy. I went to school with his parents. He's a fine young man and a great representative for the district, so I look forward to seeing him and Will both in the future with more and more rewards.
Congratulations, Adam.
All right. Will Gruka, boys soccer team, 11th grader. Through just 12 games as of 10-10, 2021, Will Gruka has tallied 24 goals, 16 assists, and played in 96% of the total minutes this year. Will has led his team to clinch second place in the section, putting the Ambridge Bridgers en route to a strong seed for playoff position. Will has also been the subject of a Beaver County Times article for his outstanding achievements. Will is our only junior captain and is on pace to be selected for all section and all Whipple. On behalf of the district, Will, and on behalf of the board, we're so proud that you represent Ambridge. Where is Will? Right here. I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on. We're very proud to say you're part of our district and our program, hon, and we look forward to seeing more and more accolades from you.
Congratulations.
Okay. Moving forward to public comment regarding agenda items only. At this time, district residents may come forward to comment on agenda items only. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each resident will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once. This period for public comment prior to the standing committee reports will be limited to one half hour. Although not required, board members desiring to address questions or concerns may do so after the resident's comments, questions, or at the conclusion of the committee reports. There will still be an opportunity for residents to comment on any business relevant to the Ambridge Area School District under old and new business at the end of the meeting.
Hi, Desiree Conrad, Ambridge. I'm going to start off with, I just had a question about the comprehensive plan. I went over it, trying to understand it, you know, the best that I can. If someone could elaborate for me on the school resource officer, being that we don't have one at the junior high now, if we can elaborate on that. And number two, what it looks like to me is the biggest concern is math test scores for students. That's the main thing that goes over. And, you know, it goes into discuss how to target that, and I didn't really see a whole lot of meat and potatoes on that. And what's concerning for me is, I saw like walkthroughs and stuff like that, but it's just basically the curriculum math. That's the solution, is Common Core math. And I don't know if any of you guys have done Common Core math with any of your kids, if you have grade school kids, if you've done any of that, if there's anyone up here who's worked, I'm sure there's some parents out in the audience who have done it with their kids. I have. And I know there's a whole lot of words thrown out, like rigorous and challenging and, you know, for the times and stuff like that, but the words that are used and what's actually implemented and done are two completely different things. If you go out into the corporate world, out into society, out into the, you know, jobs, the biggest thing, the biggest goal is to have, to get from point A to point B with as few steps streamlining. That's what's desired in the workforce, to get from point A to point B the fastest you can. Common Core math does not offer that. It is absolutely more steps. It is, what we call rigor is just frustration. And you can talk to any people in the mills, in a tech field right now, the biggest problem coming in, Common Core has been in for, since what? When did we, do you know when we implemented it? Sometime around like 2012, I want to say? The workforce has just declined since then. I think it was 2010, actually, that it went national, you know, in Nashville, but as far as Ambridge School District, I want to say it was like 2012, 2013. But if you talk to anyone in those fields, in a welding field, in a contractor field, these young kids are coming in, they don't know how to read a tape measure. They don't know how to get from point A to point B the quickest. So I'm not going to take up too much more time, and I have other stuff that's not on the agenda, but I'm just curious, like, what was talked about there? Do we, have we ever entertained? I don't know what that beeping is.
That's the timer for the three minutes.
Okay. But I'll conclude, but I don't know, has anyone on that comprehensive plan even entertained, not using the Common Core curriculum? Thank you.
I'll talk a little bit about the SRO if solicitor Turnbull, may I read the email we received from Chief O'Brien?
Sure.
Okay. Desiree, just so you know, I did speak a little bit last week, so did Dr. Pascarella about the SRO at Economy. I attended a council meeting asking for assistance and help in retaining an officer there. I looked on their website and, just a few short words, I said, "It says right at the top of your page, you know, 'We love our children.'" I said, "I love our children too, and I want to see them protected. We need, we really need an officer in that building. Would you be willing to work with us?" So on and so forth. We were scheduled to have a meeting, correct, Dr. Pascarella?
Yes, they, when I met with Chief, he had indicated that, you know, that you were to reach out, what you did.
And I did.
To the council to set up a meeting.
Are you having a hard time hearing? So, Dr. Pascarella said that I was asked to reach out to council, which I did. I sent an email requesting a meeting. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's, I'm sorry, I just said, and I'm going to talk loud to make sure you can hear me, but what I had stated was, in a meeting with Chief O'Brien, he had indicated that council, the next step would be to have Ms. Fisher and myself meet with the council, and that she should reach out to them to do so. And she did do that, and then from there, she received the following email back.
And then I'm going to read you the email that I received. From Chief O'Brien. "Good afternoon. I was forwarded your email that was sent to Council President Marone concerning the future of the SRO program. This morning, I have been advised that at Tuesday night's council meeting, Economy Borough Council has officially decided to end the SRO program with the Ambridge Area School District. I have been tasked with advising you as such." So, you know, we were going to, we were going to address this and talk about it in the superintendent's report, but just so we're clear, you know, I think both of us have made every effort to try and, to try and forge a relationship there. To say the least, I'm disappointed that our local municipality would bow out of that agreement, but we will work and do everything we can to come for, come to a solution on getting, getting an SRO there. Do you have anything you want to add?
No, I just think that, as you stated there, we will continue to look at other options. Obviously, that may present some challenges and some things that we have to figure out because it's, you know, in the borough of Economy, but we will continue to work with the solicitor and other folks to try to, to work on Plan B.
Can you talk a little bit about the math, either, or you or?
So, I mean, the comprehensive plan in general, I mean, in regards to math, the new comprehensive planning tool really looks at the data that's presented, and it asks you to find data points, and Mr. King took the lead on that, and it asks you to pick a couple focus goals in particular on what you need work on when you look at some of the things that are obviously things that need improvement. And so that was what was selected and reviewed with the committee, and that's what we will be focused on. Doesn't mean it's the sole thing that we're going to focus on, but those are the major goals, as indicated, that we would be working on. As far as Common Core and that goes, I mean, obviously, PA Core standards are what we need to follow. That being said, I always say there's folks on both sides of the fence on that. Obviously, some people do feel that it is beneficial, and other folks feel that it is frustrating, and I understand that point of view. I see both sides. One thing I do think, I always try to say, if you don't feel it's the strongest methodology, and it's not the way that a lot of us were, were used to doing things, a little bit of lemonade out of the lemons, as they say, I've said this a few times, is the fact that I hope that what it's doing is trying to, that frustration that we're talking about, and I think it's actually a good, a good word that was utilized, it does lead to frustration sometimes in regards to rigor. Hopefully, it will help our children to be able to problem-solve out in the real world. I think what was stated about still making sure that you have the basic skills to read tape measures, to use the example that was brought up, is important, but I think some of the goal, whether it's happening effectively or not, I think a lot of the goals in around the Common Core or the PA Core standards is to really try to push the rigor, to be honest with you, to challenge our students to not just utilize those skills, but apply them. In other words, not simply just doing multiplication or division problems, but actually reading through a problem and applying them to the job, which is trying to help you be a better communicator, reason, be an analytical thinker. That's the goal, and I understand sometimes that leads to frustration, and we have to scaffold back and try to do that in a differentiated instruction model in our classroom, but at the end of the day, I think that's the goal. But I do, I do understand that for many folks, it has been a bit frustrating, and that's, that's fair, and it's something that I know that as we progress, we try to figure out ways that, you know, we make them, we present opportunities for our teachers and staff to help parents and students to make this successful and make lemonade if you feel that that's not the best way. Other folks feel that, just in closing, I'll try to wrap it up to not be long, I think other people do feel that teaching them the critical thinking skills, that they have to apply that knowledge, actually allows them to problem-solve and communicate better when they do face real-world problems, or at least I think that is the goal. So, I definitely respect the opinion, and I don't think it's something new, it's something that we need to just continue to, to work on. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pascarella.
Cindy Wargo from Economy. I just have to ask, the Common Core or, with your new math, I don't know about you folks as far as if you were taught the old way of math. What was wrong with the old way of math that had to be changed as far as being taught? I remember teaching my son in seventh grade how to do the multiplications and adding and math. He understood the way I was taught, and I showed it to him. He went to school and was told it was wrong. He had the right answer, but the way he got the answer was wrong. I don't quite understand it. If it was easier for him to understand the so-called old math, why would it matter if he has to go the new way as long as he understood how he got there?
Well, are you finished? Sorry, I didn't want to cut you off.
No, that's okay. Go ahead, please.
So, yeah, I think that, you know, I even saw today in an observation where there are students still doing, you know, fast facts for mental math, that's still occurring. Actually, in some of it was pencil and paper, and some of it was actually engaging in apps, you know, apps on the iPad. So, I don't think that it's completely out the way that, because it looked to me like the way that I learned the times tables and those kind of things. I think really what it's looking at is, sometimes when you, I'll use this one last example, sometimes when you think about an actual problem that you're solving, it doesn't spell out exactly which function, for example, you may use, you have to kind of figure out how's the easy, what is the easiest and most efficient way to get there, point A to point B, but also to get it correct. So, I'm not sticking up for the PA Core, I mean, I think there are some positives to it from where I sit, and there are also some things that maybe are more challenging. Obviously, those standards are adopted by the state of Pennsylvania, and that's what we're assessed on and charged to, to lead. But I do see some people using some other methods that, you know, are helping students to gain there. Some folks still use number lines, or some folks do better looking at groups and with visuals, so. I think there's a lot of ways to get there, so I wouldn't be discouraged, and I would say that if there is a way that helps them get to the right answer, I would encourage them to try to work with the teacher, maybe communicate as to what exactly is wrong with the way that you're doing it as compared to the other way. There may be reasons, they might build upon each other, but in general, I think we have to try to figure out how we can get the students there, and everyone learns differently.
But you're, in other words, you're saying that if, if a child can learn my way better than where he's being, the way he's being taught in school, but he understands the answer, how he got there, so my way would be wrong and the teacher's way would be right?
Well, I don't, I don't think that's what I said, but I'm sorry if it came across that way. I think what I'm saying is, is students learn in a variety of different ways. If you're helping your student get there, I would just encourage you to speak with the teacher, because sometimes what I was saying is, is they're teaching something because that skill builds upon another skill. So maybe you guys could work together, have a conversation, and figure out how we can continue to move forward.
Okay, I appreciate that, but what about, are they using apps to get the answer, or are they doing it themselves longhand, or whatever they do? Because I would much rather have my child learn how to do it long way and not just put 2 plus 2 or 2, or into an app and get the answer. To me, that's not teaching.
As I said, I think there's, what I saw today in the classroom is a mix between both. I mean, I saw, you know, people doing it by hand, people also using apps. I mean, we, I think there is a part to mental math, which the folks are teaching, which helped them, and I saw that today, so they weren't allowed to use a device to get there. What I was referring to as far as the iPad went is, it didn't, they weren't using the calculator function, they were just typing that in, but it was giving them instant data and allowing them to score points towards a goal, to learn their facts, but there are some points where even the PSSA testing allows you to use a calculator, as you well know, because we have calculators at easy access to us, between phones and other things that students have. So, I think it's a mix between the two.
I just would like to challenge the kids more and not use an app.
I appreciate it.
Let them understand the basics on how they got there. That's, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Crouppier from 1300 Adams Drive. Can you hear me okay? 1300 Adams Drive, John Crouppier. Regarding the increased considerations for the superintendent and the administrators, so that we can understand better in the community, could you take a few minutes to describe or relate to us who conducts your mentioned evaluations and some of the measurements and metrics used to determine those kinds of increases in sportsing increase, right? So I'm not saying that those increases aren't merited, but we don't see it. We don't see the metrics behind it, right? And I think, given what happened today, some of that got, people read the agenda, people got upset, and I think we need to know some of what's behind that so that we understand some of the value connected with that. I think that'd be good for all of us, and I'll let you answer.
Solicitor Turnbull, can you weigh in on the Act 93? Just give us a little?
Sure, I can, I mean, I can talk about the process generally, and then if there's anything more, certainly, if anyone wants to add. So, relative to, so there is an Act 93 plan, and, and that is the, that's the base, that's the baseline document that describes all the benefits and the various areas and expectations in terms of compensation. So, there is an evaluation process for every, for every teacher and for every administrator in the district that's conducted by, I mean, by Dr. Pascarella, I believe largely for, for the administrators. He's measuring them, I believe, based on, on goals and other expectations in different areas in a way that's, I believe, is similar to teachers. And there's, for teachers, obviously, we have, we have a statutory rubric of evaluation, points, assignment of values, so that's how teachers are evaluated. Teachers don't, teachers' contracts have automatic wage increases, so their wages are not tied to evaluative purposes, for evaluative tools. Administrators are, and, and the superintendent is as well. So annually, the board sets goals or areas for, for the superintendent to focus on at the end of the year per his contract, and an instrument is shared with all members of the, of the Board of School Directors. They complete that, it's compiled, and the data is aggregated and shared with them. Dr. Pascarella's contract specifically has categories, so there are percentages that are tied to different levels of achievement, and so the percentage that you see this evening is reflective specifically of that evaluative purpose or that evaluative tool, and it is, there's not, and it is not discretionary in nature, I think, I guess, is the way that I would describe it, and the Act 93 plan is set up in a similar way. So if, if a certain level of performance on those evaluations are achieved, then that drives a certain percentage typically. I believe that that is, I believe that that's accurate.
Megan, can you just talk a little bit about how we post on the district website, you know, the evaluation in regards to the superintendent by a certain date? And Megan and I worked on this quite a bit, and the rest of the board as well, as far as evaluation for the superintendent.
Sure, and you've probably seen there, on the, on the district's website, and I believe it's tied, perhaps to Dr. Pascarella's, his page on, on the district website, the, the areas or the, the areas of the value, the broad areas or categories of evaluation are stated there, and then once the evaluation is complete, we by law are required to, to post a generalized statement about whether or not he was proficient, and certainly he, he did meet that, he exceeded that standard this year.
But just for general understanding, the, the metrics are, or I should say, the increases are contractual so long as those metrics are met?
Correct.
Right? Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving forward to committee reports. Education and Technology. Dr. Maganello?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First, I have a point of information. The Baden Memorial Library, who our district partners with, is presenting a new book club entitled the 11th Hour Book Club for students in grades two to five that are reluctant or struggling or just really stubborn and don't like to be readers. If anybody is interested, please reach out to Baden Memorial Library for more information. You don't have to live in Baden to be part of this program also, so it's open to all of our students. And then I have three voting items up for the agenda tonight in education and technology, so I would like to approve items one through three for approval tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Metz. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Keigho?
Yes.
Dr. Maganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pedego?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. Finance and Budget, Ms. Pedego?
Thank you, Mrs. President. I have seven items for voting this evening. I wanted to just pull out item number seven because it was not on the Meet and Discuss. It's an addition for us, so I wanted to read that for everyone because there's also a component of recognition if this is accepted. It's recommended to accept the Pennsylvania Department of Education's Bureau of Special Education 21 and 22 Competitive Integrated Employment Grant. This grant will be used for life skills and transition in the high school. Dr. Amy Filipowski and Mrs. Teresa Brewer were instrumental in securing this grant.
All right, moving forward to committee reports. Education and Technology, Dr. Manganello.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First, I have a point of information. The Baden Memorial Library, who our district partners with, is presenting a new book club entitled the 11th Hour Book Club for students in grades two to five that are reluctant or struggling or just really stubborn and don't like to be readers. If anybody is interested, please reach out to Baden Memorial Library for more information. You don't have to live in Baden to be part of this program also. So it's open to all of our students. And then I have three voting items up for the agenda tonight in education and technology. So I would like to approve items one through three for approval tonight.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Metz. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Campbellong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Dr. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettigo?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Finance and Budget, Ms. Pettigo?
Thank you, Mrs. President. I have seven items for voting this evening. I wanted to just pull out item number seven because it was not on the Meet and Discuss. It's an addition for us, so I wanted to read that for everyone because there's also a component of recognition if this is accepted. It's recommended to accept the Pennsylvania Department of Education's Bureau of Special Education 21 and 22 Competitive Integrated Employment Grant. This grant will be used for life skills and transition in the high school. Dr. Amy Filipowski and Mrs. Teresa Brewer were instrumental in securing this grant. The amount's $30,000 for this year and $15,000 for next year. So I'd like to move for the adoption of items number one through seven under Finance and Budget, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Curtis. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Campbellong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Dr. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettigo?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Building and Grounds, Mr. Angus was unable to attend this evening. Mr. Metz, can you take care of that, please?
Yes, there's only one voting item for tonight. It's parking lot light replacement.
Okay, we're looking for the adoption of item number one. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Campbellong. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Campbellong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Dr. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettigo?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Athletics, Mr. Campbellong?
Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Public Relations, Mr. Metz?
Yes, we have one voting item tonight for the library contributions.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Young. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Campbellong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Dr. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettigo?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Steering and Rules, Mrs. Kehoe?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to move for the adoption of items one through seven.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Campbellong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Dr. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettigo?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Legislative, Ms. Young?
I have one item promoting PSBA officer elections.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Campbellong. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Campbellong?
Yes.
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes.
Dr. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Pettigo?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Salary, Schedule and Labor Relations, Mrs. Curtis?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Personnel, for Mr. Angus, Mr. Metz, would you handle, please?
Yes, looking for the adoptions of one through, one, one through 26.
Thirty. Nope.
Or.
Right. Do I have a second?
Thirty.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mrs. Kehoe, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Campbellong?
Do you have a stay?
Mrs. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kehoe?
Yes, on everything except item number seven, I'm going to abstain.
Dr. Manganello?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes, to everything but 17, 18, 19.
Ms. Pettigo?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving forward to the Solicitor's report.
I have no action. I don't really use the seat thing.
Thank you. Moving forward to the Superintendent's report.
I think we kind of addressed the one issue we did want to talk about earlier. The only thing else I would like to do, Dr. Filipowski is here. I'd like to congratulate her and ask her if she would please come up to the microphone. I know she's been with the district all of last year and this year, and we really appreciate her work and are excited to bring her on full time. So congratulations and welcome officially, even though you've been here doing the job. We really appreciate all of your hard work.
Yeah, so I just wanted to take a minute to thank the board and to thank Dr. Pascarella for having me. I really, truly have enjoyed my time here, working with the administrator staff, parents, students, most importantly, in the community. So thank you for having me, and I really look forward to continuing my work here. So thank you.
Amy, on behalf of the board, we want to thank you as well for your hard work and dedication to the district, and we look forward to, to having you on a regular basis. Dr. Pascarella, two things I did just want to discuss quickly in the Superintendent's report are Thursday packets and the COVID calls for the district. I, and I think a few of the other board members have had, had some calls in regards to the COVID calls and the, you know, the repeated calls several times a day. So I would just like to ask if you could talk about that a little bit, please?
So, I mean, as far as the COVID calls go, we call every time we get a positive COVID. When they come in close together, we obviously put the two, two on the same message if possible. If not, we send them out as soon as we get them. The point about that is, to be honest, we want to make sure that we're transparent with the community and that they know that we have that issue occur in the building and we're doing that as quickly and as efficiently as possible to, to let them know that. So that's why we, we do, we do the COVID calls in the way that we do.
Is there any board feedback at all? Does anybody have any comments or feedback on the COVID call situation? I know a few others have gotten calls. Go ahead. Cardin?
I appreciate the transparency. I know that sometimes it's difficult to have it. I mean, I have four children, one in the school still, and getting the calls is, you know, but that's what we asked for. I think as a community, we ask for transparency as it related to COVID cases. So from my perspective as a community member and as a board member, I think we continue as, as normal, but I really appreciate the feedback. I just think that more transparency and communication is better than less, so.
Thank you, Ms. Pettigo.
Is there a way to possibly only do it once a day instead of getting, like, today I think we had calls within a half an hour of each other. Like, parents are working, everybody is busy, and I guess maybe even being a mom of young children, it's hard because you don't know if the school's calling you because your kid's sick. I mean, my kids are at home right now because they're sick, but you just don't know. So you're answering every call even though you're working. I think it's hard on parents that don't have kids that can text them during the day to say that they're sick and that's who's calling. That maybe if we could limit it to being like, once a day at 3 o'clock, we get the COVID calls or something would be great for communication. We're still be transparent and we can not have every 30 minutes a disruption at work.
I don't want limited calls. I, I'm fine with them just the way they are because you're going to limit the calls and that one call that could come through that you think that could be a COVID call could be a nurse calling or could be somebody happening at the school and a parent's not going to get it. So I'm fine with the calls coming in just the way they are.
I'm fine with the way it is.
I do got one question. Is there any way to break it down possibly to each school? Like, your kids are in economy, so you get the economy. Or if you're in high school, you get all the high school. Or if you're in the elementary school or the middle school, you get all the middle school and so forth, or State Street. Is there a way to, hey, this is the group of them at State Street? Boom, send it out to State Street.
I believe there is a way to do that, but when we're speaking, you know, we keep hearing the word transparency. For parents in the district, just in general, to know how many cases there are, then that becomes a question too.
Yeah, I was just.
Yeah, no, and it's a good question, you know. Anybody else? No? Okay. Thursday packets, Dr. Pascarella. I know some of the elementary schools do, do do that. Are we back to doing those Thursday packets, do we now?
I don't think we have elementary principals in the, in the auditorium today, but I'll look into that and double check. I didn't think we were not doing it. However, I know that it, some folks may, you know, for transmission, may not be doing it. So, I mean, I guess what I'm hearing you say, pretty simple, is if we're not doing, we want to make sure that we are doing it, correct?
Does anybody have an objection to that at all? The Thursday packets? Okay, so, yes. Do you have anything else to add?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Superintendent's report.
No, I don't think so at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Old and New Business. It is now time for Old and New Business. Any district resident who desires to comment on any business relevant to the Ambridge Area School District should now come forward. Each person must state their first and last name and address prior to speaking. Each person will be allowed three minutes and can speak only once.
You guys are going to get sick of me. Desiree Conrad, Ambridge. I, for one, I'll say I like the, getting the calls because I got my numbers girl over there and she's been keeping statistics on it. And we've had way more of an influx on COVID cases since we've started masking than before. I don't know if anyone's kept the numbers on that or the statistics, but we're actually at more cases, more positive cases since we've been masking. So that was, that was very interesting to me. But I want to address what, in our past meetings, we've talked about the issue of masks and masking. And some of you have brought up and suggested reaching out to our local representatives and out to our legislators and so on and so forth. And we had, and I just want to bring up, you know, some of the stuff that's brought up there. As far as Matzie went, God bless him, I, we're never able to get a hold or get a response from Matzie. But I will give you some answers about what's going on here with the masking issue. I'm sure you're all aware that in order at Ambridge School District, you have to file 504 with the medical documentation for your child to be exempt, which they're denied their religious exemption, their personal exemption, so on and so forth, which is constitutionally, it's a violation of their constitutional rights. But Representative Erin Bernstein kind of put a little Mythbuster there as far as maybe losing your, the fear of losing your funding over not wearing masks or not complying with the Department of Health. He made mention that, number one, no school has ever lost their funding in the history of Pennsylvania. Never. In order to do so, you would, both the House and the Senate would have to take a vote on each individual school. From there, it goes to the governor. And the odds of a Democrat governor signing for any school to lose their funding is next to zero. Not going to happen. We're not going to lose any funding over this. The other rep, or person was Senator Doug Mastriano, who personally answered, I'm a friend of mine, and his comment about Ambridge School District, this is verbatim, I'm going to read it to you, was he recommends that you file a complaint with the Pennsylvania Department Relations Commission. I know that wasn't three minutes. Medical documentation and 504 plan is not required in the Department of Health guidance either. They can't pick and choose what parts to follow, and your child has the right to an education and not to be discriminated against.
Okay, that's your time. Thank you. All right, thank you. Solicitor Turnbull, before we, could we just quickly, a brief, again, talk about our plan? And I know you've done this in the past, but just for a quick, a quick, quick refresher, our position as a district and how we reflect it.
Sure, on exemptions or on?
Yes.
Okay. So we now have a series of guidance from, from PDE, from other, from other authorities that do reference the 504 process. And I think the, I think the misunderstanding to some degree is that you do not, you do not have to go, have a 504 plan to have a mask exemption, but the threshold amount of information necessary to, I mean, to engage in the exemption process is, is the same threshold information. So there needs to be a diagnosis, treatment, and then a correlation from a medical professional that connects the, the issue that a student is medically being treated for and the need not to wear a mask. We have worked through that process with a number of students. And in, and in that level, in that engagement, there have been resolutions that, that fall short of a full mask exemption, but are other accommodations. And that is something that the district has, has done repeatedly, will continue to do. And we welcome and encourage that, that level of engagement. If we receive information and it doesn't quite get us to where we need to to meet that threshold, we, I believe that there are communications that go back to the parents or the requesters that kind of explain that, but we'll keep on doing that. We understand that this is an important issue. And again, we'll continue to evaluate it, but it's, it's a standard and a process that is consistent with, with other districts, with the cases that have come through so far, that we have no counter indications that we are doing it incorrectly, and we believe that it is appropriate.
And just for clarification, once again, your legal opinion and recommendation to the district in regards to the mandate, we've had several discussions on this in public, but for, for people that are new to the conversation, could you just please refresh and talk about that?
Sure, I don't think there's any question that the mandate applies to schools. We have an obligation to, to implement it. Up to or until such time as that it is invalidated, and there has been, despite there being various cases throughout this Commonwealth, and to be honest, other states as well. And we don't have any of those counter indications that it is illegal, unconstitutional, any, any of these other things that would give us pause and change my recommendation to you as the Solicitor. The Solicitor is always going to say to follow the law. And we are, to follow the law and those orders that have the weight of law. I understand, I understand that people have different readings of that and understandings. It is my recommendation to the board to comply with the mandate within the, and, and we continue to evaluate it and, and work with families to the best of our ability to provide the relief that, that you can, and that's appropriate under individual fact-by-fact situations.
Thank you.
Danielle Merrick, I reside at 415 White Pine Lane. I didn't intend on speaking on masks, but I did file an exemption for my daughter, to your point. And it was corroborated by a doctor and her therapist, and it was still denied by her principal or whoever reviewed it. So what you said is actually hypocritical. What I'm actually here to speak about is the October newsletter under the Prevention Specialist, Ms. Laurel Baker, who will be coming in under the PATHS program. Ambridge Elementary used the words that it is a too-good-for-violence program, but upon further research, I feel that verbiage is misleading. And PATHS is actually funded by CASL, which is C-A-S-E-L. The financial donors of CASL are the Rockefeller Advisors, the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative, whose mission statement is to build a more racially inclusive, just and equitable future for our children, and to break down immigration reform. And PATHS teaches pillars of critical race theory. It teaches mindset, character development. It teaches mindset, character development, and I quote from their website, changes the way our students think. So it is not your right, the Ambridge School District's right, Chan Zuckerberg's right, or Bill Gates' right, to own my children's mind, their thoughts, or to shape their character or their mindset. That's my job as their parents. It's our ethics and our morals and our religion that shapes our children, not these foundations. And I would encourage you to remove this from the curriculum. I do have a few questions, though, for the board. Why is Ambridge Area School District taking a collective behavioral approach with social emotional learning with our children? And did you receive federal funding to implement this program? And when did Ambridge Area School District become responsible for developing character in our children? I repeat, our children.
I'm sorry, repeat that again, hon, I apologize.
When did Ambridge Area School District become responsible for developing character in our children? The schools are for academics, not character building. That happens at home, and there's a lot of things that influence that, our values, morals, and our religion. It's not the school's place.
So when we talk character, are we talking that we shouldn't do anti-bullying programs also? Because those are mandated by the state, which is to build character and it is to teach responsibility. So I'm, I'm unclear on the character piece and what the question is. And maybe I missed a little bit, Danielle. I missed the first question that you had. I couldn't hear that. But it is our responsibility in our anti-bullying policy to make sure our youth and our children understand that.
Any other comments? No? Okay.
My name's Jordan Volokh, Ambridge. Now, I heard again about the officer. You got an email from the chief?
That is correct.
Can you read that again?
Sure. Borough Police Department. Good afternoon. I was forwarded your email that was sent to Council President Marone concerning the future of the SRO program. This morning, I have been advised that at Tuesday night's council meeting, Economy Borough Council has officially decided to end the SRR, SRO program with the Ambridge Area School District. I have been tasked with advising you as such.
Okay. I mean, in a polite way, it's me, that sounds like you pissed them off. The reason why you got rid of the officer, as far as I know, and what you guys beat around the bush with, was because he's wearing a mask.
Sir, we did not get rid of the officer. Let me just, Solicitor Turnbull, can you, can you speak on that, please?
Why isn't there an officer?
Pardon?
Why isn't there an officer at the school?
Your, your battle would be with Economy Borough, sir. We've asked for an officer.
All right, that's not what I'm hearing, through officers in the law here.
I, I went to a public meeting asking for help.
Right.
I, I, again, I said.
All right. So now that there's no officer there, who's in charge? Who's, who's watching our kids there? Because we had a secretary, because we had a, well, I heard, I heard people saying, accusing him of being racist and all this other stuff, but he's the only person that will take a bullet for our kids.
Then put a mask on for our kids.
I don't wear a mask anywhere and haven't been the whole time.
So be respectful of your bad example to the kids. Y'all start acting like you're someone, showing some respect.
I'm showing my kids respect to the world.
You trying to love all people?
Okay. So on top of that. All right. With this whole mask thing, we went through the same loops as everyone else does, and you guys, no one has taken it. Our kids are now being rushed to doctors, and you guys aren't accepting anything that we throw at you. We don't believe in it, just don't believe in it, period. And then we saw physically the effects it does to our kids. Disregard it. You guys don't give a crap. Where does it say that we have to have it? And who's, who's doing these, the policies? Everyone's following the policies. I have a thing with the policy at, at the middle school about Mr. Turk. Are you guys allowing him to do everything that he has to? To go with this agenda of this mandate?
I'm not, I'm not sure what your question is. Are we allowing him to do what?
Taking our kid out of the class, putting him in a separate room all day?
Again, Mr. Jordan, I heard your first name, and I apologize. Volokh? Is that correct?
Volokh, yes.
I asked our solicitor to reiterate it once again, her legal opinion as representative and our legal counsel of this district. I don't think anybody, any of us here are here to battle. We understand your opinion, we respect it.
Then is anyone sticking up for us here on the board? Very transparency there?
Again, again, we, we are under a mandate. We have agreed to follow those mandates and place them in our plans, and that is the legal advice of our solicitor. We're trying to be fair. I, I hear you guys and mean no disrespect.
Your legal advice is, is going to allow this school to get sued so bad, you're going to go bankrupt.
That's your opinion, and we, I respect it, and I think everybody on the board does as well.
Okay.
I'm Christina Volokh, I'm Ambridge Harmony Township. I want to know when do you follow policies and when you do not? Because apparently, it doesn't matter when they have a homecoming dance. There are board members here that their children went to the homecoming dance, hundreds of kids, no mask, but that was okay. When is it appropriate to follow these policies that you say you're following these mandates, but you're not doing it constantly? There's pictures on social media of teachers having pictures of these students, some have masks on, some have them under their chin, some don't have them on at all, some have them on properly. But my kid, who has a medical exemption, has to see a cardiologist now, and you will not accept the, the exception of me or the exemption of a medical profession who has seen my children since the day they've been born. But you're, you're going to follow this mandate all over what? I, I don't understand. It's okay to, just like, policies on, you need to, what is it? Do the, what the heck is it called? When you, I'm trying to think of the proper word. Hang on. You have to get your clearances in order to do anything at the school, right? So I want to know why the, the Bells coach had no clearances until, what? She got, she couldn't come to the game last Friday, but she was able to coach all the way from July to now?
Which coach, hon? I apologize, I didn't hear which coach you said.
The Ambridge Bells coach.
The Ambridge Bells coach.
Absolutely. So it's okay for her to not have her clearances, but she still showed up to the game, you know, even though she wasn't supposed to. But she was able to coach from July to October? So you're, you're telling me that you're following these policies and mandates, but you pick and choose which ones to follow and, and what school district or what school? You know, I have three kids, all in different schools. Each child is treated differently. One, one child at one school, the teachers don't say a word to this child for not wearing a mask or having it under her chin. But at the middle school, you'll have that principal stand at my damn driver's door, not letting my child out of the door of his own car until he puts a mask on. You tell me, what do I do? Who do I give my medical doctor, who do I give my medical bills to? Who, who's going to pay for that? My, my child's MRI tomorrow because she is being forced to wear a mask when her pediatrician is clearly saying that she cannot. But a 504 plan? That is not in the DOH plan. It was recommended, not required. So what are your answers here? Like this, you can't pick and choose on what policies do you want to do today.
I'm not aware of any, anybody picking and choosing.
I mean, I don't understand this. Certain schools, you know, teachers don't care. There's pictures all over the internet of kids wearing, wearing them, not wearing them. Nothing's being done. But my kid gets sent home if, if he refuses or gets segregated into a room because his doctor says, hey, if you can't breathe, it's okay, don't wear one. But there's other students in the same damn class. Same class.
Your three minutes is up. But I, I would encourage you to reach out. Mr. Turk is the principal with the child in question that we're speaking of?
Yes. And he, he's no help, absolutely no help. No help.
You can, can she send?
So who is above him?
As we, I think the solicitor has stated, anyone who wants to put their exemption request in, they get reviewed. If we do not know the answer, we take them to the solicitor. If we're not sure, if we need interpretation, and from there, we get back to the parent whether or not it was accepted or not. That's what we do.
Since one isn't a medical professional higher up than an education when it comes to their health, you are not health doctors.
No, I'm not. You're correct on that.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Randy Dawson from Locust Street in Ambridge. We all are talking how important this SRO program is. I can't agree with you more. And I just feel that the time has come that these police departments are in a staffing shortage. And I get exactly why Chief O'Brien and the board probably took that direction. I think the time has come that we, as Ambridge Area School District, look at bringing on our own police department. Quaker Valley's done it, Beaver Falls School District has done it, Southside School District has done it. And who's to say that Ambridge doesn't come to you tomorrow and say that we can't support it? I come from a public safety background, if you're not aware of it. 28 years as the deputy director for 911. There's a huge shortage, not just as you folks have in teachers, we have it in the police world, we have it in the fire world, we have it in the EMS world. I know that it's a cost that you may not want to have to bear, but I think it's time that you look at it. Your solicitor comes from a program with the Pittsburgh School District that has their own. Thank you.
Just, just to make you aware, the, the SRO that was, was at our middle school is now back in working the beat, so to speak. So I don't know whether there was availability from another officer that could take his place, but again.
There is not. There is no other person certified in the Economy Borough workforce to do that.
Solicitor Turnbull, do you know, there is emergency certification?
There, there are emergency certifications right now. It's a, but I do understand that it's about a 40-hour, for the preferred training, it's about a 40-hour training program.
But the certain, the emergency certification, is that, that?
There is, I, I believe that there is an emergency certification process right now.
Okay. And just to clarify, we are looking at all aspects of what the next step will be. Just to make that clear.
Kristin Paxton, Hickory Drive, Economy. I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but based on the, just the comments about the SRO, and I have spoken about it previously, I was just here last week, I wanted to just echo what the previous resident said. We should be looking at other alternatives. You mentioned that there are going to be some Plan B that you're considering. I think that should absolutely be one, and we will be asking every single month for updates. So if you have any kind of benchmarks, milestones, estimated timelines that you can provide over the, you know, next few weeks, hopefully it doesn't take months, but if it does, we're, we're going to continue asking.
And we are being very transparent in sharing that we will be pursuing that.
I appreciate it.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor to adjourn. Thank you, Mrs. Perez. Thank you, Ms. Young. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for attending. Have a good night.